March. All right, well. It's the hour, so please rise for the.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one hundred dot individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'm calling the regular meeting of the Fergus Falls School Board to order. And to begin our process tonight, we will establish a forum through the court. Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Here.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Mrs. Hermes present. Stephen Biggessa.
Here.
We have a forum. All right. Thank you. Our agenda tonight is slightly modified from what we received in the email format last week. So I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda that's before us at this time.
So.
Is there a second? Second? Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, the agenda is approved and we'll move on to a resolution on acknowledgements. And would you like to proceed with reading that super text?
Absolutely. February twenty first through the twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, is proclaimed as School Bus Driver Appreciation Week in the state of Minnesota by Governor Tim Walz. The Fergus Falls School District recognizes the invaluable contributions school bus drivers make to public education and student safety, and extend a sincere thank you for all their service.
All right, now we'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right, and look for a call please. Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Mrs. Hermes, yes. Stephen Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right, thank you. We have reports tonight from our principals and our superintendent. We'll begin with Assistant IQ Academy Principal, Ryan Johnson.
Good evening, thanks for having me.
Hello.
The Every Student Succeed Act. Reminder, it's kind of the three-year process. We were labeled for our lower graduation rate. We're in year three of that process, working for the, working with the Regional Center of Excellence on that. Some strategies we've been using over the course of the year, looking for ways to help improve our graduation rates and just help kids in general. Some of the things we've come up with. We have our Finding Your Path class. There you'll see below the chart, just number of students that we have in there. What we're looking at for that, are students that are engaged but just need a little extra boost to kind of get over the top. So we have a high school teacher, a middle school teacher, working with our students there to help with that. We also have our high school and middle school teams, working on tier number two support for our students. So each week, our middle school and high school teams meet to discuss students. Kind of with the larger numbers we have this year, we're focusing on one grade level each week. So in the high school level, it takes us a month to get through those high school students. You can see the numbers of students that we discuss at those meetings are the total served and then those that get out. So what we're looking at is three Fs or more is the data that we're using to identify targets in need of, students in need of support at that level. As you can see at the sixth grade level, we reached out to twenty students over the course of the semester. Fourteen of those either could be, they withdrew, or they got to two or fewer failing classes. You can see the total number of students in the grade on the far right as well. I won't go through all those numbers. But each week, team members can divvy up the students, trying to set up one-on-one meetings with the students to see what we can do to help out. I'm kind of focused this year with our monthly ESA team meetings. We've been looking at what can we do to help support our learning coaches? We always come back to with our students, what else can we do? We're calling, we're texting, sending emails. Switch it up as well, because if one thing doesn't work, so we try something else. So then looking, what's the next level that we can do to help support those students? So trying to engage those learning coaches to help them as well. Huge thank you to Mrs. Borman, one of our counselors. Created a bunch of how-to videos. I pushed those out last week. Got some good feedback from learning coaches. How to check grades, how to check time and content, items like that. Our plan moving forward is continue to push some of those out, highlighting one each month for our learning coaches as well. And we're also taking a look at student climate and culture. What are some things we can do there? So we're always looking for ways to improve student learning and student experience with IQ Academy. Second semester, we're also offering a block algebra course, block geometry and block English ten. So what that is, over the semester, they can earn the year worth of those courses. Kind of credit recovery. We're not set for credit recovery, except for those three courses. So we have teachers teaching those this semester. Current enrollment, see there, elementary is way up, as we knew, with all the hires we had this fall. Middle school's up slightly, up forty from where we were at this time last year. High school's down a bit. I kind of attribute that to students having options in their own district. We saw we had a huge influx to start the school year, but then we didn't have as many coming in throughout the semester. And some of that is having choices in their local district to go distance learning. I anticipate that number will grow though, because Minnesota Virtual, which is another K-12 school, will close here into February. And then Insight, another K-12 school, closes mid to late March. So then we'll get all of those K-12 enrollments to IQ. I know last year, we talked about needing to cap at a thousand, but with the hiring we did at the elementary level, we have some room for growth there as well. So we're in good shape to take on those additional students. On the backside, some passing rates. Our part-time indistrict students, those are Kennedy High School students taking one or more classes with IQ. See, we had fifty-two students semester one, only had three Fs, so we had a passing rate of ninety-five percent. Very good. And then our passing rates for grades six through twelve are listed below. At the end of first semester during our orientation week, so technically week one of semester two, that's our orientation week to help get new students onboard. So not starting out behind, especially with our part-time indistrict students. This year, that ended up, it was nice that we had that because of the district pushing back second semester start. So we were able to hit the ground running there too, but just giving additional week for students to turn in assignments. At the middle school level, we had seventy-three additional credits earned over that week. And at the high school level, one hundred and fifty-six credits. So a huge thank you to our teachers. We really target those in that forty to fifty percent range, that last couple of weeks of the semester. We're going to get those up. Just a couple things to note, K-12 is changing their name to Stride. They want to get into some beyond high school courses as well. So they're changing from K-12 to Stride, so we hear that. That is why. I know Andrea, our K-12 employee, she didn't know about it either. K-12 didn't want that leaked out, so it was a surprise when, I think I saw it because our principal email, where I first saw it and asked her about it, and she said, yep, she heard about it a day before. Working through interviewing, register our intruency positions for IQ. So a huge thank you to our K-12 IQ employees that have been picking up the slack, getting students in. So we're looking forward to getting all those positions filled to better serve our students. Reregistration for IQ Academy will begin a big push here in March. Looking at offering keyboard to students as well. Online school, something I kind of took for granted as well, but how can we support them? One of the principal conferences, meetings I went to talked about, what are some barriers? They mentioned, you know, students maybe aren't doing the written portions because they don't have the typing skills. That really hit home with me, looking at that, that we don't have a K-12 course for that, but the district does have additional licenses that we can try out this spring and see how that goes with our students. Kind of the plan is to try that with our new students, if we can screen them, see what their skills are like. And then also offering families, if they're interested and want to try that, we can get them connected. Have a staff member help monitor students with that. Courses possibly looking at for next year, I'm working with the curriculum committee. You know, the big one was coding, so looking at that. And we do also have an employee with an agricultural license. So we'll be looking, investigating some of those courses, possible additions for next year. So there'll be more to come with that, with you guys this spring. I already talked about the other two K-12 Minnesota schools closing. Any questions that you guys have?
So for the courses you're looking at, I mean, they have you, they allow you some leeway in terms of creating courses? Or is it offerings that they already have, but they just haven't provided?
So for these specific courses, K-12 has curriculum for these. And we do have the option too, where we can use a shell of a course.
Okay.
Have a teacher build, but we haven't had the egg license in the past. But with our work-based learning teacher, she has that license as well, so. We'll be looking at student interest in that.
So Ryan, when you talk about competition for Stride, I mean, you mentioned the other two K-12 providers. I'm looking at the Minutetab you, what last week, they said that there's currently fifteen, I'm sorry, there's thirty-eight state-approved online programs operating now. And Minnesota Department of Defense is reviewing applications for fifteen public districts and charter schools, and another twenty-five districts who said their applications are on the way to become online providers. Do you think that that'll catalyze our, or not catalyze, pick away from our enrollment? If there's that many more districts, and a lot of these are offering all the way down to kindergarten, which they generally haven't done in the past?
Strictly a guess, maybe a little bit. I mean, part of it though too, is that we've been doing this for ten years. Like we do a great job what we're doing as well. Like a lot of districts are looking at to keep those students that have been distance learning, that want that option or like that flexibility of online as well. So it could hurt. I think we'll maybe see fewer, you know, throughout the year we have in the past.
Then why don't you keep track of our indistrict students here in IQ and Stride? But I'm guessing that if we have some students that are in those districts that are now going to be offering K-12, that they would be the ones that would be at risk because they would want to stay in district, maybe?
Possibly. I know we, I had one family just said they want to be involved with their prom, their actual curricular activities there as well. In terms of athletics, with our online agreement, they're eligible in their home districts. So for sports and music, they can still participate there. So it's a possibility. I think we have a great thing going, a great staff as well. Like I said, where we're at with numbers, I think we're pretty good. You know, just about everything's two sections. Our seventh and eighth grade right now are three sections, so a little larger. But just in terms of staffing, I think around that two sections where we're at currently provides us some flexibility. So there will be more competition. But I believe in what we're doing, and I think word of mouth is best advertising as well.
Ryan, can I ask you a question just on the intervention part of it?
Sure.
Tier two?
Yep.
So we're doing our total served and then the ones that are getting out. I take a lot of this as credit recovery, or what, or is it just, is this just failing the courses that they're taking right now in that semester?
Correct.
Including that part?
Yep, so we're pulling students with three or more Fs. So you know, if they got out for a sixth grade, they could be down to two, one, or maybe zero. But they just weren't at that three target anymore.
Okay.
We kind of adjust that number just based on total number of students. When we started last school year, middle school, we were looking at two Fs or more, but then just sheer volume, we had to adjust.
Any other questions for Principal Johnson?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Scott Colbeck, the elementary principal at Adams McKinley.
Good evening. I don't recall if at the last board meeting, I spoke about this or not. If I did, I apologize. However, I can go a little bit more in depth with this idea of one school, one book. We're kind of excited about this at the elementary level. In fact, I brought a copy of the book. Maybe I'll just start it with you, Natalie. You can just hand it around in case you guys get an idea of the book. So one school, one book was an idea that was brought to us by one of our first grade teachers named Mr. Jeremy Knick. This will be our third year of doing a one school, one book effort. And what that means is every student in the building at Adams School, plus the first graders at McKinley, plus the second graders at Cleveland. So it's a first and second grade effort, including our distance learners, will get a copy of paperback book titled The World According to Humphrey. And Humphrey is, he is a classroom pet, he is a hamster, and it's a very, very cute book. We're going to start this book in March. You would think we would do it in February during, I love to read month, but there's so much already going on in February. We're going to do a kickoff on March second. Mr. Evilleold, our Title I teacher, is going to read the first chapter to all of the first and second graders at the same time. They're all going to Zoom. And we'd like to thank our PTO for purchasing that book. Our teachers select the book and then PTO purchased the book. We got a good deal on them, one dollar per book. So I think for a little under three hundred dollars, we're getting a book into the hands of every first and second grader. Some of the fun that we do with this is we put a schedule together and ask the parents to read a chapter. It's not really a chapter a night, but there's a schedule. You might get through about three chapters in a week perhaps, because this is a fifteen-chapter book. Doesn't take long to read a chapter, maybe five minutes. But the idea behind this is that the parent will read a chapter to their child at home. The child brings the book to school the next day. And then the teacher reads the same chapter to their entire class. So a student will hear the same chapter twice. But what's kind of fun is in the morning, before the teacher has read the chapter to the students, there's a trivia question that's asked over the intercom by the building secretary. The teachers come up and create these trivia questions, give them to the building secretary. She asks the question. Now, the kids who were reading the book with a parent the night before will be able to write down their answer. All of the correct answers in every classroom are collected. They're brought down to the office, put in a box for a drawing. And I think there are ten names drawn. Those kids come down to the office for a little, for a little prize. So that creates some excitement. I have to just tell you something funny. Starting last Wednesday, I started to read just one chapter a day. So today was chapter four. And the secretary at Adams School heard me laughing quite loudly. And I felt like I needed to at least explain to her why I was laughing about chapter four. Chapter four is titled The Most Important Man in the World. And it's about the building principal, Mr. Morales. Now, keep in mind, this is written from the perspective of a hamster, right? The classroom pet, who's very observant. Mr. Morales brought the hamster home one weekend. Every weekend, this hamster goes home with a student in the classroom. However, they weren't ready to be sending it home with kids yet, so the principal decided to take it home. And what made me chuckle was Humphrey's observations of the building principal were that the kids at school listened to him, but his own five-year-old and seven-year-old at home did not listen to him at all. And it was, it was just, it struck me as very funny. And so I felt I owed our building secretary an explanation today. So that is our one book, one school effort. The book that we started last year but weren't, weren't able to finish due to the pandemic was Bigfoot Littlefoot. That was written from the perspective of Bigfoot, a Sasquatch. So we had a lot of fun with that too, until, until we couldn't. All right, moving on. Superintendent Drake already touched on this, but it was part of my presentation. As you mentioned, it's Bus Driver Appreciation Week. Earlier today, I learned that it's maybe actually, there's a Bus Driver Appreciation Day that maybe falls a little bit later this week. But a special thank you to our bus drivers for taking good care of our kids and transporting them to and from school every day. I know that our staff and our students have some things planned for the bus drivers this week. Sometimes they, they get a few treats at the end of the day, or a few cards and things like that brought to them. So we hope to make sure that they feel appreciated. Just want to touch on parent-teacher conferences a little bit. For anybody that's listening in the public, just a reminder that on Sunday, February twenty-eighth, the online scheduling portion of parent-teacher conferences will be turned off. So we hope parents are getting in there and scheduling a time to conference with their child's teacher. This will be done over Zoom, as they were in the fall. And a special thank you to Jesse Thorstedt and our technology department for kind of leading that effort and helping get all of the teachers squared away with, with getting their calendars put together so that teachers or family members can access that. Just a little bit about kindergarten registration this year. That's coming up on Monday evening, March twenty-second. We're going to do that from five to six. This year, we're going to do it in our auditorium, right across the hallway here. And the reason we're going to do that is, in past years, excluding last spring, last spring, we did not do a kindergarten registration at all. But in past years, we've done this at the McKinley Gymnasium. Family comes in, mom, dad, child. We send the child off to a classroom with a kindergarten teacher, and then we give some presentations to the parents in the gym. This year, this year, we're going to do it in the auditorium. We're going to ask one adult to represent each household. And we've invited, like we do every year, we've invited Dawn Clark from the bus company to come and speak to the parents of kindergarteners. We invite our school nurse gen cohort to talk to our families about the importance of having their child's immunizations up to date so that they can start school in the fall. We invite Molly Danielson to talk about getting a preschool screening done before entering kindergarten. This year, we're going to have Michelle Carlson, our secretary at McKinley, be there to talk about online registration. And then new this year, our own Melanie Cole, I've asked her to, to be there and present that evening, kind of in a dual role as a school board member, but also in her job in the community as a social worker and working with families where attendance can be a challenge. So thank you, Melanie, for being willing to be there that evening and address that a little bit. And then I want to just give a little shout out to Sue Lewis. She's in our technology department. She just does such great work behind the scenes. Last year was the very first year that we gave families the opportunity to register their child for kindergarten online. We learned a lot through that process, and Sue has really streamlined things, made the process easier for families to understand, made it more efficient. And we're ready to roll with that now this year. There's going to be some mailings going out here in the not-too-distant future, inviting families to kindergarten registration. And then I just wanted to touch base on a little bit for next year. We're doing some planning for next year. Planning for the following year is, is, there are challenges every year with that. This year, we have the added challenge of trying to figure out which of our students who left us this year to join IQ Academy, you heard Ryan Johnson talk about those elementary numbers are really up. So we're contacting those families, families that we know that their child was with us last year. But now this year, they're either IQ Academy, or they're being homeschooled, or they're at a parochial school. And so kudos to our building secretaries for contacting all of those families. And you know, we're, we're hearing their plans for the future, and that's going to help us plan for next year. How many, as an example, how many first graders can we plan on having next year, second, et cetera? And how many teachers will we need for each grade level? Some of these families though, they're still undecided at this time. There, some of them are giving us a yes, we're coming back. Others, others maybe not, and then others, we're just not sure. We're just not sure yet. Some have questions about the masks. Some have questions about curriculum. And so we're just going to do our very best at some point in time and make some decisions with the information that we have going forward. So that is my report for this evening. I could certainly entertain any questions from the board.
Scott, what time is the pay, the pay registration?
Yeah, it's five PM. And we always make sure we get them out at, at six o'clock.
And that will just be, those be parents?
It'd be, what we're asking is for one parent to represent each household.
But there won't be any kids there?
There won't be any kids there. We don't have anywhere to send them. We're not going to ask our teachers to come and be here that evening. But I have a lot of information that I give them, and then I open it up for a Q and A.
Yeah, I've sat in on your thing over at McKinley. There's a lot of value to having the kids in the building and seeing the building, so hopefully we can talk to that someday.
Well, then, and Kirby, we are, as of right now, still going to try to plan to do what we call RITES.
Oh, sure.
Which is an opportunity to get those kindergartners into the building for two days on June ninth and tenth, for an hour and a half each day.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Principal Colbeck? All right, thank you very much. And now we'll call on Principal Ryan, our principal at Cleveland Elementary. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
As it's snowball week at Kennedy Secondary School this week, and there's lots of fun activities and some special dress-up days and the like, kind of breaks up the midwinter doldrums. During the month of February, we have had Friendship Fridays in February. And so each Friday, we've had a theme day. And it's all around promoting friendship and kindness and being good to one another. And we've had Pyjama Day already and Hat Day. Last Friday, we were all decked out in our maroon and gold. And this coming Friday, we will have Mismatch Clothes Day. So that'll prove to be interesting too. But thanks to our school counselor, Katie Yegi, for promoting these days. It does create some fun for all of the kids and all of the staff too. We have lots of staff participation. But a fun way for us to talk about friendship and promote that, that theme. On this next week, Mrs. Yegi has scheduled classroom visits. And our third grade students are going to be talking about managing hurt feelings and problem-solving skills. And our fourth grade classes are going to have some further discussion about ways in which we can be helpful if we see somebody not being kind to another student. So very timely topics. We've done a lot of intervention around these same topics. So it's, it's a great opportunity to kind of get in and have further discussion amongst classmates as well. At our last PTO meeting, they've, each year, they've had different fundraisers. And this year, they've cut back on those fundraising efforts in lieu of the pandemic. They've continued to explore the possibility of the Boosterthon. And they did decide that they're going to move forward with the Boosterthon fundraiser this spring. And the dates of that are going to be April twenty-first through the thirtieth. And Boosterthon is an organization that hosts events nationally. And they have continued to carry on different events across our nation and have learned strategies to uphold health and safety guidelines and just make accommodations in lieu of the situations that we are all in. So we have moved forward with confidence that they're going to be able to come to Fergus Falls and work with us and accommodate our three elementary schools. In our previous years of experience with the Boosterthon folks, they send out wonderful staff members, and they're engaged and involved with us throughout the time that this event is taking place. A great part of this event is that it has a character education component. And this year's theme is on sports, teamwork, and courage. And so we're excited to see what they have put together. It's very motivating and engaging with the students and staff and kind of promote it throughout that whole week. One important factor was that we were able to include our distance learning sections. And so we will be able, we will certainly include those distance learning sections in the theme and the activities. And part of this is to, everybody gets a T-shirt to wear. And so they'll, they'll be included in various, various ways too. So a big thank you to our PTO. They work hard behind the scenes, plan events, and they use these funds to support activities for students, honor teacher grant requests. Some recent requests were the books for Adams, oh, the Humphrey book that Mr. Colbeck just talked about. That was funded by PTO. We've had a few teachers just recently submit some requests for certain books or nonfiction books to accommodate curricu, or support curriculum. So lots of, lots of good things that the PTO does to support our elementary schools. And then I also too, wanted to just recognize our bus drivers and express our appreciation for them. It's truly a partnership with those bus drivers. We communicate with them through email, face-to-face, waving them from the side blocks. Bus referrals unfortunately, but we use those as a means to communicate and improve situations. And so it's, it's a pleasure to work with. And so, it's, it's a pleasure to work with those folks and get to know them over the years. They have a big job, and their number-one job is to, to transport our students safely. And that's the message that we communicate to our students, too, when we have to talk about, think, situations that haven't gone so well on the bus, that our, our bus drivers are doing a great job of transporting our students, so we need to do our part in supporting those efforts. So, a big thank you to our, our bus drivers. Cleveland students are going to be given the opportunity to write a little note for their bus drivers. We found some simple little note cards that have some things, some blanks to fill in, so it'll be a great way for them to be able to express their gratitude for their bus driver. And then, looking ahead, Mr. Kobek touched on conferences are right around the corner. I just, our first, our fall roundup conferences went very well virtually. They were well-attended, parents really expressed their appreciation that mom could be at work and dad could be at work, and they could still conveniently meet and have a very productive conference. I think teachers learned a few things during those fall conferences, too, on ways where they could send some artifacts home with students ahead of the conference, or have things scanned in to present virtually, so they can all look at some similar documents. So, we've learned from that. Our special education teachers have been hosting IEP meetings in the same format, where the agenda is displayed on the screen, and everybody can have a visual resource, so that, that will go very well. And then, again, just wanted to kind of remind parents that that cutoff for the online register, or signup, is February, Sunday, February 28th. And that gives us a little time behind the scenes to complete some further communication and confirmation of those conference schedules. And, and again, I was going to, looking ahead, on planning for next school year, we had 32 third and fourth grade students that chose an option outside of the Cleveland building this year, in either parochial schools, homeschooling, or a virtual format. And of those, those students, we, as Mr. Kobek mentioned, we have some that are definitely yes, we're coming back, we missed that in-person experience. We had nine of the 32 that said maybe, not sure yet, and then nine who are going to stick with their current situation, and then four that we haven't heard, haven't been able to make contact with yet. So, our secretaries are doing their diligence and continuing to reach out to each and every family, so that we have a, as accurate a count as possible in our planning for next school year. So, good things are happening.
Good. Thank you. Any questions for Principal Run?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And then, we'll hear from our high school principal, Dean Monk.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Just have to make mention that Ryan Johnson does an absolutely fantastic job with his work over at IQ Academy. You would not want to take a look at his schedule over the course of the week with the number of meetings that he tries to attend, whether that be with individual families, or teaching teams, or individual teachers, but he puts in a ton of time, and very appreciative of his efforts. And he also does a fantastic job of keeping myself and Superintendent Drake up to speed on anything that might be going on in there. So, just appreciate his efforts tremendously. If you can believe it already, the midterm for the third quarter is this Friday. This school year is going to fly from here on out, as well we know. So, already, February 26th is midterm. We will be asking for some grade reports as of the following Wednesday and getting them out by the end of the week, so we can have grade reports in parents' hands, then come parent-teacher conference times, which is going to be on the evening of March 8th and all day and evening on March 11th. And as was mentioned before, these are going to be virtual conferences, and then those, those students will be in the building here on Friday, March 12th. So, all of that is going to sneak up on us, and just a wonderful chance, again, for parents to tune in and get some firsthand contact. And we did hear also, from all levels, that, you know, they appreciated the time of being able to schedule a time specifically and know that you are not going to run into any lines to see a particular teacher in the, in the hallway at the high school level. So, there was some advantages in relationship to meeting virtually on that as well. Talked to a couple of members of our music department the other day, they are getting very creative and looking for ways to bring groups in for some type of a concert experience. Our pep band, Superintendent Drake sat in on Friday night, they are doing five different taping sessions here, where they are putting a CD together in relationship to pep band music. They're coming in five different evenings and doing some recording. So, again, we know how good our pep band has been over the years, they have not had a chance to play at specific events, so this was a way for them to get together, kind of enjoy each other's company and put a nice product together, too. So, we appreciate their efforts. I know Mr. Peterson on the orchestra side is looking for ways with which he can bring in groups, and band and choir will be looking to do the same thing. It may be that we have to divide groups up, it's not like we're going to have a whole high school concert on one night, but maybe we just have an a cappella concert one night for 45 minutes, and that group gets a chance to come in. So, they're going to get creative, we're going to see what the rules are as we get closer to springtime here, but just to let you know that they're, they're thinking about that. Snowball, we had coronation this afternoon at 2:00. I have to admit, it was one of the nicest coronation programs I've seen in a while. And, you know, with the limitations of the chance to get the kids together and any kind of rehearsal and practice time and things like that, they did a fantastic job. Thanks to Mr. Tilke for putting that together, that was livestreamed out there, so anybody that wanted to get a chance, and parents of participants had an opportunity to join us in the balcony and get a chance to view from there as well. So, put that together, the royalty will get a chance to get out a couple of times here this week, and also get a chance for a little meal outdoor on, on the road in the community. And then, we've got some snow activities for Friday afternoon. No chance really in relationship to a dance, but a lot of times, that's not the number-one item that these students are looking for, anyway. They're just looking for a chance to get together and spend some time with their, with their peers. So, it was a really nice event here today. Completion of the high school registration process for next year is underway. You can imagine the challenges that this brings this year, just in relationship to the still over 115 students that we have out on total distance learning. So, getting that, all that information back from those students, along with, you know, parent information back from all of our students, is a challenging task. Our counselors are doing a great job trying to track that information down, and we should have some good numbers and reports to bring back to you in March here, as we gather that data for next year. At this time of the year, we also look to, for an ACT testing date. We are doing this, this year, on March 30th for our juniors. We did our seniors in the fall for those that elected to take the ACT here, and now we're going to target our juniors for March 30th. This year, of course, we're not making this semi-mandatory, because we know that some students won't feel 100% comfortable coming in for paper pencil test, but we are encouraging all of our juniors and their parents to take advantage of this. This is about a $75 option right here, to have a chance to take this test one time, you know, free of charge, at least to the parent and the student. So, we hope that they'll take advantage of that. We are looking to get snowball behind us this week, and then, of course, we have other high school events, too, that we're concerned about, just in relationship to prom and graduation. We've been talking about those activities here already, brainstorming ideas. You know, once again, I think there's a ton of things that we can do with prom that don't necessarily have to include an all-out dance. And I think that as we get through snowball here and we prove how many things really are possible, we're going to get pretty creative here in relationship to what we can do for, for prom. And then, like I say, the, the year is going to fly, and we're going to see that June date for graduation coming up here quicker than we can imagine. And I think, one idea that's been thrown out there to date is maybe asking for our parents of our seniors to reserve more of a weekend of the June 4th, 5th, and 6th, with the idea that if we can make this a larger event by being able to go outdoors and bring more people to that event, that would be great. But with that, then, of course, we're contingent upon the weather. So, could we do something like have a Friday night at 7, a Saturday night at 7, a Sunday night at 7, and say, hey, folks, reserve this weekend for us, because we might pick the best weather day that we have here in order to do something, pull out more largely, and so we can invite more participants to be there and more families to be there as a whole. So, I just throw that idea out here as a little bit of a place to start. Of course, we'd love to go at 7:00 on, on Friday night and get everybody into the gym and have, have a great, you know, performance by all of our music groups, but if we sail our under some restrictions, we want to have some flexibility to pull that off as best we can, give it a great experience for our graduates. Our middle school students are looking to be invited back into the building five days a week here, starting on March 1st. So, that week, we're going to look to bring them in five days a week. Our schedule allows for that, basically, because we have specific distance teachers that are designated at the middle school level, so we will be able to take that, take that on. There's a few exceptions to that, music department and others, but we're going to make allowances for those as well. But looking forward to get those middle school students back in here five days a week. I should point out that our REACH sections are full. REACH is an intervention program that we have both at the middle school and the high school level, where students have a period of day where they come in and work with either Keri Flattow or Ellie Nicolauson. And about half of that is designated towards study skills time, and the other half is dedicated toward SEL, character development, all kinds of areas with which, just looks at the whole person and tries to help them as much as possible in, in a very small group setting, maybe anywhere from eight to 12 students involved in a particular section. So, we have great people doing this, that's probably why their sections are full, because they're very well-received here within the secondary school, and we appreciate their No really distinct plans at present to change the 3-2 model that is now being done at the high school as far as their learning model. We still have, like I mentioned, 115 to 120 full-time distance students. It's really hard for us to imagine how we could serve those students well if we didn't give them more than one day a week. With that, as we've done throughout a couple of months here already in relationship to the school year, we're looking to invite our face-to-face students in a little bit more on Tuesdays and Thursdays, to allow some of those students that maybe are struggling a little bit more. There's no harm done in sitting in the back of a classroom, getting a little bit of extra help from a teacher when they're not maybe zooming with their distance kids. And so, we have some students that have taken advantage of that throughout the course of the last few months, and we'd like to expand that offering as well. But we still continue to have discussions, but we don't see a real good viable way in relationship to increasing the time of face-to-face students, at least in the foreseeable future. I think that's what I had for today. Questions?
We're done, thank you.
Thank you.
Principal Monk. And we'll have a report then from Superintendent Drake.
And with the audience's permission, I'm just going to take this off to project a little bit better. Good evening, pleasure to be here. I have a number of items tonight, but I think they'll go fairly quickly. Again, on behalf of the district, our appreciation to Otter Tail Coaches, it's no secret that for many of our students, the bus driver's face is the very first face they see in the morning on their way to school, and the last face that they see as they're being dropped off at home. And so, that's a, has a huge impact in setting that student's day and kind of bringing it to closure at the end. And we're very grateful for our partnership with Otter Tail Coaches and the level of professionalism and cooperation that we have between the two organizations. So, thank you to all their bus drivers and their staff. I also want to thank Mr. Tilke and the student council for the work that went into planning the Snow Week celebration, and all the students and staff that were part of today's Snow Week coronation program this afternoon. It was a lot of fun sitting there, watching students be students, and enjoying what is a normal activity as part of a traditional year, once again, with entertainment and recognizing a Snow Week king and queen. So, congratulations with that to Chance Spazio and Anna Anderson, Snow Week king and queen. Nice honor bestowed on them by their peers. I also want to thank Melissa Amundsen for her work in the Pathway 2 Early Childhood Grant Application. This application helps make early childhood programs more affordable for our families, and so, I'm very grateful for the work that she put into that. And also want to recognize Hannah Lehman and Blake Stoltman for their work on the ADSIS Grant Application. ADSIS, and I'll touch base a little bit more on this maybe a little bit later, but ADSIS is a program that we run that provides additional support in the areas of reading and math for our students. I also want to thank Mr. Cumbero for the invitation to eat with the pep band and listen to the recording session last Friday. Was a lot of fun for me, and again, another opportunity to see kids back doing the things together that they enjoy, which is what our school experience is all about. I want to share our congratulations to the district, all of our school district staff who are part of the Prairie Science Classroom, or utilize Prairie Wetlands for field trips, et cetera. This morning, the Fergus Falls Public Schools was presented with the honor of Conservation Partner of the Year in recognition of our dedicated partnership and significant contribution to the Fergus Falls Wetland Management District. So, in addition to meeting with the park staff, we received a very nice commemorative plaque for the award, and I learned a little bit while I was out there, too. I believe they said 27 years our district has now been affiliated with Prairie Wetlands. So, that's a really, really nice legacy and a program and a partnership where you continue to be very proud of. COVID-19 update, we had one staff/student positive case last week, no classrooms were quarantined, and the county case rate dropped to 10, 10 per 10,000, which is the lowest rate we have seen in a very, very long time. Since our start to, essentially, more traditional start of January 8th back with the semester, and I use that date because we had some carryover case reporting over the winter holiday break, but from January 8th to this point, we have only had 11 positive confirmed cases among staff and students since that time. So, that has been very, very positive news. That comes on the heels of bringing in students 9 through 12, back to three days a week on January 20th, and our 7th and 8th graders, four days a week, beginning February 1st. On the vaccine front, it's estimated now, we've had, I would say, between 250 and 275 staff members that at this point, or in the very, very near future, should have had their second dose of the vaccine series. And we have approximately 30 staff members left that have indicated an interest to be on the vaccine waitlist. So, we've been most fortunate there and appreciative to the state and Otter Tail County Public Mr. Monk and I may have some overlapping reports, but we will begin five-days-a-week learning model on March 1st for our 7th- learning model on March first for seventh and eighth graders. I do have some updated information on first semester failing grades and this is a fairly stark contrast between a traditional year and this year. So at the end of first semester, and I'm referencing grades nine through twelve with this report, we had three hundred and nine failing grades. In comparison, in 2019, 2020, we had a hundred and forty-seven failing grades. But there's one other piece that's important as we look at the impact of distance learning and that's a recollection that we dropped our passing percentage at the nine-twelve level from sixty percent down to fifty percent. Had we not done that, and I do want to thank the high school administration and the teachers for their cooperation in this accommodation, we would have added another two hundred and ninety-two failing grades at the end of first semester. So if you look at this and try to make everything semi-equivalent in terms of passing percentage, et cetera, we would have without the accommodations have had six hundred and one failing grades this semester in comparison to a hundred and forty-seven a year ago. So to me, again, it just highlights the challenges as both the staff and for our students in a distance learning format and my appreciation for all the extra efforts and accommodations that went out by our staff and assistance from our families in trying to make a difficult set of circumstances as positive as it could be. I do have a number of questions from parents that have come to me in the last couple of weeks and I do want to just touch base on those. Mr. Maki addressed some of them as well. The question about the possibility of moving to a four to five-day in-person for senior high. So we're now almost exactly one month into the three-two model. I think it's a good time to get some feedback from our students and the teaching staff on how things are going and listen to any concerns that might be out there on the parental side. The third quarter midterms will be another important checkpoint academically on how our students are doing. But as Mr. Maki mentioned, having the, what has been fairly stable now, distance, one hundred percent distance learners, holding at about a hundred and fifteen, does present some challenges for us. I do especially like the idea, and we did this first semester, especially when we went with that hybrid model, of allowing students that are struggling to continue to come in on Tuesdays and Thursdays as needed. I think that that's an important accommodation and appreciative of the efforts to continue. With prom, we do have a late prom this year, which affords us some time, hopefully for additional restrictions to be lifted. It's scheduled for Saturday, May first. We will have a grand march and there is a post-prom being planned. There is a DJ on standby. We will do what we can to give the students a great experience with whatever restrictions we're under. That could look more like a street dance, weather permitting, but we certainly are exploring lots of options there. With graduation and commencement, again, we will hold a traditional indoor ceremony if the restrictions permit. If not, Mr. Maki outlined a plan where we would ask families potentially to reserve Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evening and hopefully one of those three days would be weather permitting where we could be outdoors on the football field and in the stadium doing commencement that way. One of our concerns all along, and we talked about this last year and again this year, is what about the prospect of moving graduation out later into the summer when maybe restrictions have lifted? Our concern really is the farther you go into the summer, the greater the likelihood that the students will start to scatter and pursue the other plans they have beyond high school. And in looking at the high school graduation experience, it will be the last time that that group of students will ever be entirely together as a class. And so the more we can commit to something on our scheduled date, the better chance we have of an event that will honor all of those students in the graduating class and keep that class together to participate in that ceremony as an entire grade. Band and choir concerts will certainly take place this year in accordance with the COVID-19 capacity restrictions. Currently, that's been increased to two hundred and fifty, depending on the venue. We also have the ability to livestream and/or record those events for the community if we're under capacity restrictions as well. So our athletic event attendance just increased as well to that two hundred and fifty capacity. I had an opportunity to watch a little bit of the boys' basketball game last Friday after the pep band rehearsal and we had a nice crowd in the gymnasium. Certainly far short of what we would normally have, but it's nice to see those numbers continuing to increase. Lincoln School, the quality issues with the marmoleum tile, we had our third batch delivered in the middle of last week. They reduced the climatizing from seven days down to forty-eight hours. Seelands was pleased with the quality of this batch and they were working over the weekend. It is possible at this point and probably likely that the large cafeteria space has now been, had the tiles completed. We are still anticipating a move-in date with students, so first day of students in the new facility, March twenty-second, with Children's Corner moving in and starting programming a little bit later than that. Under general announcements, we'll meet on the 2021-22 school calendar later this week. We have a facilities committee that has started meeting and I would open this invitation up to anyone in the community that would like input and discussion on school facilities to please feel free to contact me and we would love to have you participate in those conversations. The Student Climate and Culture Committee has one more meeting this Wednesday and we should have a full recommendation to the board after that. The DACRAC meeting had presentations from math, Title I, and ADSIS. The curriculum is nearing a recommendation for a science adoption. That should be done here within the next couple of weeks. And there is an implementation plan, K through twelve, to adjust and implement the new science standards over the next several years. And then the plan is on the curriculum side, and this is especially due on the high school end, but to go through a math curriculum review and adoption process next school year and we'll probably start unveiling a little bit of that work even yet this spring to get a leg up on it. And with that, free to field any questions you may have.
On the science one, that's K through twelve?
K through twelve, yes.
Madam Chair, is the question period just for board members or public as well?
It is reserved for the board.
Good, thank you.
Anything further from the superintendent?
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll continue on with our agenda and we have for consideration the general consent items, which include our minutes in the February eighth regular board meeting. And then there are two personnel items. Our HR Director Elaine Jenke had to step out. Consideration for approval is certified contract changes for Vanessa Jacobson. She's an elementary teacher at IQ Academy and she'd increase her contract up to point six-three-two-eight, full-time equivalent, starting on February sixteenth. And then also an increase on the contract for Jacqueline Ness Ludwig. She's an art teacher at the high school in the ALC and then an increase in her contract as well. We have one certified staff retirement and that's Carrie Thompson, district curriculum coordinator effective on April first of this year. That includes the general consent items. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on these items? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, here nothing, that is approved. I have a resolution and I'll remove my mask for clarity, communication here. The title is 2020-2021 American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution. Whereas the Fergus Falls School District, number five forty-four, has an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee composed of parents, guardians of American Indian children who are eligible for Indian education programs, American Indian language and culture teachers and paraprofessionals, American Indian teachers, American Indian counselors, American Indian adults enrolled in educational programming, and American Indian representatives from the community. Whereas the school district affords the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee the necessary information and the opportunity to effectively express their views concerning all aspects of American Indian education and the educational needs of the American Indian children enrolled in the schools and the programs. And whereas the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee is directly involved with and advises the school board and district on Indian education programming and planning, and whereas the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee develops and submits recommendations to the school board and district staff pertaining to the needs of American Indian students. Therefore, be it resolved that the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee concurs that the school board and district are compliant with Minnesota statutes, sections one-two-four-D, point seven-eight, and that the school board and district are meeting the needs of American Indian students. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption? I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption. Thank you, Missy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, there's a second. And then any discussion on it? In summary, it's an outreach, that segment of our community that qualifies as guardians or parents for Indian students to make sure that we are satisfying what they believe is important for their children's education. So a special effort to try to attend to that. Missy's had some involvement. Anything further to say, Missy?
No.
All right. So any other commentary? Otherwise, please take hold. Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Herries?
Yes.
Stephen Vigerson?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Thank you. And that last resolution for the evening is on the retirement of Carrie Thompson, whereas Carrie Thompson began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in July nineteen eighty-six, whereas Carrie has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past thirty-one years, and whereas Carrie has done an excellent job as a fax teacher and curriculum coordinator for the district, now therefore be it resolved by Fergus Falls School Board to thank Carrie Thompson for her thirty-one years of dedicated service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will someone offer that resolution?
I'll offer that resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
And any discussion?
I think a well-deserved thank you. Personally, I graduated from high school with Carrie right here in Fergus Falls and I was her next-door neighbor with Steve, her husband Steve, for six, seven years. So I know her personally and professionally and it's well deserved.
Very good. Thank you. Hearing no further commentary, once again, clerk, will you take your role? Certainly. Stephen Vigerson?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Herries?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right, thank you. And that concludes our regular agenda. We'll stay for a work session on buildings and grounds and personnel discussions and we will have our next regular school board meeting on Monday, March eighth, either here or in the Otter Community Room. We'll see how we're doing. All righty. And with that, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All right, Stephen motions and second by Kirby. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. All right, Missy.